The Muscatine City Council will come to order. We'll begin tonight's, this evening's activities with a roll call by Fran Donaldson.
Counselor Ms. Lorette?
Present.
Fitzgerald?
Present.
Natbig?
Present.
Shahadi?
Present.
Beinam?
Present.
Phillips?
Present.
Brad?
Present.
All present, your honor.
Thank you, Fran. Would everybody stand and please join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you and welcome, everyone. Begin with item number four. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak to counsel about an issue that is not on the agenda this evening, now is the time to do that. Please step to the podium. No one interested, okay. Item number five, minutes and approval. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the February 7th and 8th, 2012 budget meeting, the February 9th, 2012 in-depth meeting, the February 15th, 2012 special, special meeting, and the February 16th, 2012 regular meeting?
So moved, your honor. Second.
Phil? Second, Tom. Discussion, counsel. No discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion carries seven zero. Item six, consent agenda. The following items are considered to be, well, let me, let me back up just a second. I'm not going to read all this verbiage. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of items 8A, Communications 12A through C, and tonight's bills, which include receipt summaries and journal entries for August through December 2011?
So moved, your honor.
Second.
Tom and Jeanette, second. Any discussion, counsel? Also a voice vote, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion carries seven zero. Item number seven, a public hearing. This hearing concerns a proposed RL Fridley Theaters rezoning request within the city of Muscatine. A request has been received from the RL Fridley Theaters Incorporated to rezone a 15.029 acre area located at the southwest corner of the Mulberry Avenue-US 61 bypass intersection from R1 residential to S3 mixed, uh, mixed use, that is. Prior to any formal action, a public hearing is required. Now is the time for the public to comment.
Mr. Mayor, council members, Chuck Colder, 301 Iowa Avenue. We're here in support of this rezoning application. Russ Fridley, or Brian Fridley and Russ Van Orsdel from the company are here and would be happy to answer any questions that I can't answer, if you have any.
Thank you, Chuck.
Move to close public hearing?
Motion to close public hearing by Osama.
Second.
Second by Scott. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion carries seven zero. Item B. This public hearing concerns a proposed concession contract for Kentstein Park, the soccer complex, and the aquatic center. The city is proposing to enter into a two-year concession lease agreement with Happy Joe's Pizza for the above-mentioned sites. Due to the length of the agreement, a public hearing is required. Now is the time for the public to comment. No comments from the public. Scott moves to close. Second motion?
Second, your honor.
Pardon?
Second, your honor.
Bob? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion carries seven zero. Item C. This public hearing concerns a proposed amendment number one to the city budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2012. The 2011-2012 budget will be amended to the revised estimate amounts considered by city council during the 2012 and 2013 budget review process. This includes amending both revenues and expenditures to the currently estimated amounts. Amendments include updated revenue estimates, updated capital project construction schedules, additional grant-funded projects, and other increased operating costs. Prior to any formal action by the city council, a public hearing is required. Now is the time for that, for the public to comment.
Move to close public hearing?
Phil moves to close.
Second.
Second, your honor.
Second, Tom. All those in, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion carries seven zero. Item D. This public hearing concerns the proposed adoption of the city budget for fiscal year 2012 and 2013. Recently, the city concluded its budget review process for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2012 through June 30th, 2013. Following the city council's review and adjustments, the city budgeted, the city budget expenditures and transfers out totaled $60,413,091, and revenues and other financing sources totaling I'm not used to reading those large of numbers, so I apologize. The budget includes a proposed tax levy rate of 15.77 and fraction cents taxable valuation. Prior to any formal action, the council, the city council, a public hearing is required. Now is the time for the public to comment.
Move to close?
Mark, second, anyone? Second, Scott. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion carries seven zero. Item E. This public hearing concerns proposed loan agreements for the bond issue scheduled for June 1st, 2012. During the recent budget discussions, city council discussed the issuance of a $4,500,000 in general obligation bonds dated June 1st, 2012. Of this total amount, up to $4,500,000 is for projects considered to be essential corporate purposes. Prior to any formal action by the city council, a bu, a public hearing is required. Now is the time for the public to comment.
Move to close?
Motion to close, Osama, second?
Second.
Second, Jeanette? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay? Motion carries seven zero. Item F. This public hearing concerns proposed loan agreements for the bond issue scheduled for June 1st, 2012. During the recent budget discussions, city council discussed the issuance of $4,500,000 in general obligation bonds dated June 1st, 2012. Of this total amount, up to $450,000 is for the South End Fire Station, which is considered a general corporate purpose. Prior to any formal action by city council, a public hearing is required. Now is the time for the public to comment.
Move to close, your honor.
Second.
Your honor.
Lost my place here, gentlemen. Hang on a second. Scott and Tom for the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion carries seven zero. We're skipping eight and going right straight to item number nine. Appointments of Dr. Bradley Bark, DC.
About 8B.
Did I miss something?
8B.
Oh, you're right, absolutely. I apologize. 8B. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to hold the Hayes-Hustle 5K race on April 14th, 2012, beginning at 9:00 a.m. The event will begin at Hayes School on Cedar Street and will travel to Foyham, up to Hauser, and from Hauser back to the school. The event is expected to last approximately one and a half hours. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved. It's approval.
I'll give it to Jeanette and Scott here, or Mark here, the second. All those in favor, or I'm sorry, discussion, counsel? I would ask one question. Is there anyone here from the organization, the organizers? The route of travel, to me, is somewhat unclear. Leaving Hayes, going down Cedar Street towards the river, up Logan, or?
I, I live out there. They, they go, they go, they leave the school, they go down, um...
Cedar.
To, to Foyham Avenue. And then come up Foyham Avenue to Hauser and then back around.
Okay. That clarifies it for me. Thank you. Any additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed, nay? Motion carries seven zero. And from the mayor's desk, appointments of Dr. Bradley Bark, DC, to the Arts Center Board of Trustees, and Julie Wolfe to the Historic Preservation Commission. Is there a motion to approve the appointments as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Uh, we'll give that to Bob, second. Tom? No discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay? Motion carries seven to nothing. Seven zero. Item number 10, from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution setting a public hearing on a proposed voluntary annexation of property owned by the city of Muscatine at the municipal airport. Over the past several years, additional acreage was acquired by the city of Muscatine and added to the airport property as, as a part of the Federal Aviation Administration's Building Restriction Line program. Approximately 47 acres of this area is located outside but adjacent to the corporate limit line. Staff has initiated the annexation of this property located in two distinct locations at the airport. This annexation would bring the entire airport within the city's corporate limit line. The Planning and Zoning Commission has reviewed the request and is recommending city council take action to, to approve the voluntary annexation of this property. Prior to any formal action by the city council, a public hearing is required. This hearing will be held on Thursday, April 5th, 2012, at 7:00 p.m. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Scott?
Second, your honor.
Second, Osama. Counsel, discussion.
One quick item, your honor. That's on these annexation items. We'll be having an update at our in-depth session next week for city council information.
Thank you, Greg. This is a roll call vote, and we'll begin with Scott.
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
And Phil?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Item B. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution setting a public hearing on the proposed voluntary annexation of property into the city of Muscatine. The Parkview Condominium Association and the Irish Ivy subdivision have signed voluntary annexation agreements with the city of Muscatine. The city has extended sanitary sewer to serve the areas as was required in the voluntary annexation agreements. Additionally, the annexation of 1.8 acre city-owned parcel located directly south containing a multi-use trail is also being proposed. The Planning and Zoning Commission has reviewed their request and is recommending city council take action to approve the voluntary annexation of these properties. Prior to any formal action by city council, a public hearing is required. The public, this public hearing will be held on Thursday, April 5th, 2012, at 7:00 p.m. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Uh, Phil and second?
Tom.
Second, Tom. Discussion, counsel. Why, counsel tonight? This will be a roll call vote, ladies and gentlemen, and we'll start with Phil.
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
And Mark?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Item C. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution setting a public hearing on the proposed voluntary annexation of property into the city of Muscatine. RL Fridley Theaters Incorporated is requesting the voluntary annexation of 2.8 acre, of a 2.8 acre site located in the vicinity of the Mulberry Avenue-US Highway 61 bypass intersection. This acreage is the unincorporated portion of a larger parcel, which the applicant has previously requested be rezoned from R1 residential to S3 large-scale mixed use to allow for the construction of a proposed theater complex. The Planning and Zoning Commission has reviewed this request and is recommending city council approve this rezoning request. Prior to any formal action by the city council, a public hearing is required. This public hearing will be held on Thursday, April 5th, 2012, at 7:00 p.m. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Second.
Bob and Jeanette for the second discussion, counsel? Now the roll call vote, folks. We'll start with Bob.
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
And Osama?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Item 11 on your agenda from the city administrator. Presented for city council's consideration is the first reading of an ordinance on a proposed rezoning request within the city of Muscatine. A request has been received from RL Fridley Theaters Incorporated to rezone a 15.029 acre area located at the southwest corner of Mulberry Avenue and US Highway 61 bypass intersection from R1 residential to S3 mixed use. Is there a motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Uh, that would be Scott, in a second?
Second, your honor.
Second, Osama. Counsel, discussion?
Is this the total package, or is this only the portion that's within the city limits?
Portion within the city limits. There's an additional number of acres.
The 2.8?
2.8.
Okay. I, I thought it was, I thought the 15 was it. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else, counsel? Another roll call vote, starting with Scott.
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
And Phil?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Item B. Presented for city council, pardon me, presented for city council's consideration is a resolution adopting amendment number one to the city budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2012. The 2011-2012 budget will be amended to the revised estimate amounts considered by city council during the 2012-2013 budget review process. This includes amending both revenues and expenditures to the currently estimated amounts. Amounts include updated revenue estimates, updated capital project, uh, construction schedules, additional grant-funded projects, and other increased operating costs. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Mark, and I need a second?
Second.
Second, Tom. Discussion, counsel? It's a roll call vote, and we'll start with Mark.
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
And Tom?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Item C. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution adopting the city budget for fiscal year 2012-2013. Recently, the city concluded its budget review process for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2012 through June 30th, 2013. Following the city council's review and adjustments, the city budget expenditures and transfers out totaled $60,413,091, and revenues and other financing sources totaling $57,386,408. The budget includes a proposed tax levy of 15.77146 per thousand taxable value. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Tom, and I need a second?
Second.
Second. Jeanette, counsel discussion?
Your honor, we have a PowerPoint presentation we'd like to review with counsel at this time and, and the public.
Very good.
That's it. You should have a copy as well on, on the table in front of you as well. Ended up a little bit thicker than what I liked. I won't read verbatim in here, but I'll certainly try and highlight, um, the budget as we go through. Heard a lot of this before tonight. But, uh, so as a recap, for the 2012-2013 budget, the budget includes just over $44 million in operating and capital expenditures, and just over $41 million, $400,000 in revenues. The difference being bond proceeds and other fund balances that will be used in the 12-13 budget. General property tax, uh, taxes generate just over $12.3 million with a, uh, city, a proposed city tax rate of $15.77, or 77.146 per thousand dollars of valuation. This is the third year in a row that the tax rate is proposed to remain at that rate.
It's not going.
Problems? The budget does include $7,500 for improvements to this system.
Battery went out of the... F5.
So, I'll keep going. The, uh, so, uh, as I end it, this is the third year in a row that we're proposing a, um, a levy, uh, that will basically, that levy remain the same for the third year in a row. The next few pages basically describe, uh, in graphic format what we just went through. On the next page, we have a graphic, uh, of all city funds, all revenue sources for the 12-13 budget. Breaks down each of those revenues into, into the various categories. Licenses and permits, property taxes, TIF, hotel motel, other, other city taxes, local option. Each of the categories, just to give you an idea of, from a percentage basis, how those revenues are broken out. The next page is also, is a, is a graphic of expenditures by function, again, to give you an idea of, uh, in picture format of, of the size of those funds or, or functions. Enterprise fund being, uh, just shy of $14.5 million, capital projects at just over $7 million, public safety at just shy of $8 million, Public Works at $2.28 million, Community and Economic Development $1.2 million, Culture and Recreation $3.16, Housing $1.9, General Government $2.1, and Debt Service just over $4. The next page has a breakdown of the city tax levy rates by type. Total tax levy at 15.77146. This just gives you an indication of how that tax rate breaks out, uh, in the individual rates. Next page gives you an idea of the city's 10-year tax rate history, and again, you can see for the past three years, including this, the, the 12-13 year, we're proposing a steady tax rate. On the following page, again, city tax rate is proposed at 1577146. The city has been able to maintain the tax rate at this level for three years, even with increases in debt service, police and fire pension contributions, personnel costs, fuel costs, and, and other associated costs. Maintaining the same tax rate for the 12-13 fiscal year was possible for a few reasons. Availability and use of $80,000 in debt service fund balance, availability and use of $119,000 of employee benefits fund balance, not funding all of the general fund employee benefits with the employee benefits levy around just over $22,000 with that amount funded from the general fund. If these balances would not have been available for use, the tax levy rate would have been 1605 or 28 cents higher than the proposed levy. Next page again gives you a breakout of those individual levies, uh, and as we noted earlier, employee benefits levy was set at a rate less than needed to fund 100% of the general fund benefits, and the transit levy rate was also, well, it, it also leaves a minimum fund balance going forward. Each of these items was, of course, done to try and keep the levy at a, um, at a level rate for next fiscal year. Again, for this next fiscal year, we are proposing that the emergency levy, uh, remain at zero. That was eliminated last fiscal year, or the current, excuse me, the current fiscal year. Employee benefits levy decrease is primarily due to using the available beginning balance in the fund and not levying the full amount of employee benefits. City's proposed tax rate, uh, the, uh, at just over $15.77. The owner of a $100,000 home would see about a $35 annual increase in their taxes. And that is, again, not due to the levy, but as we all know, due to the rollback. This reflects, again, only the city's portion. This has not addressed the combined levy. Those have, uh, not, those are not yet available. And that relates to the next page. We'll try to give you an idea of where your property taxes go, city, schools, Muscatine County, and these, again, are based on 1112 rates, not the proposed breakout for next fiscal year. The city's portion being at just over, at 38.8% of the combined levy. Some highlights from the general fund. General fund projects an ending fund balance as of June 30th, 2013 of just over $2.6 million or 15.5% of general fund expenditures. This meets our minimum of 10% required by the city's financial policies and continues to address comments from the prior year Moody's Bond Rating Review, which was noted that the city's 10% minimum fund balance is lower than most other AA2 rated cities, which average a fund balance in excess of 20%. By the way, we are having that same conversation or phone call April 24th, um, with Moody's for this next fiscal year and for this next, uh, bond issu, uh, bond issuance, debt issuance. The proposed budget is based on positioning the city for future years to address potential shortfalls in revenues from the loss of, or potential loss of commercial and industrial values, property tax changes, changes in police and fire pension rates, as, excuse me, as well as potential loss of revenue from the automatic, automatic traffic enforcement cameras, uh, changes, all of which are being currently considered by the state legislature. General fund revenues and other financing sources are $59,580 higher than expenditures. The budget maintains a full, excuse me, the budget maintains full-time equivalent positions at current levels with the following exceptions. The cops grant program, which is a three-year program, um, we, we have those additional staffing increases, the evidence technician that was discussed during the budget sessions for the police department, and an additional firefighter funded out of the ambulance fund or transfer from the annual ambulance fund to the general fund. And there is a .25 full-time equivalent, uh... And there is a .25 full-time equivalent increase in the community development department, but it is, has no net cost increase with that, with those changes as we discussed. Budget does maintain most subsidies to outside agencies at current funding allocations, with the exception of the subsidy to senior resources, which was increased by $2,200. And as you recall, we have an ongoing committee related to CVB funding. This committee's met twice now and hopes to wrap things up at its third meeting. General fund budget, for the first time, includes assigned funding for future year purchases. Classification is based on recent changes in the governmental accounting standards. We have the following assigned funding. Item number, item number one is a proposed annual allocation of $40,000 that we'd like to set aside to fund the city's obligation to retain two new cops granted and funded police officers for the fourth and final year, or for the fourth year following the three-year cops grant. Second item is $250,000 in assigned funding for the fire department vehicle purchase for next fiscal year. And as we discussed, we, and in the bottom of the paragraph there, we will have the option, if it makes sense, to purchase that next year, to go ahead and fund that, should there be sufficient fund balance in order to do that. Budget also includes assigning $140,000 of funding for replacement of the city's financial software system. Proposed funding assignments are being made for several reasons. These are one-time expenditures from available funds instead of recurring costs such as staff increases. Funding the fire engine and finance software system will assist in reducing future year debt service requirements, taking those out of cash on hand rather than being funded from bond proceeds. We're also setting aside funds for the cops grant obligation. This will lessen the impact on the general fund in that fourth year of the requirement. Just to highlight from the earlier budget memo, we have had several structural changes over the past couple of years, last, for last fiscal year or this current fiscal year, excuse me, we did have a positive impact on the general fund of just over $266,000. Those are savings, whether efficiency savings, staffing, that we implemented last year for this year. And going forward in 1213, we have several items as well that we've been able to put in place. You'll note the Carver Swim Center we discussed during the budget, transitioning over three year, phasing out over a three-year period. Fire department permit confined space revenue is up significantly from $15,000 to $36,000 going forward. Human resources, in conjunction with police and fire, have worked on administrative policy related to work-related injuries and pharmacy, and our pharmacy card amounted to over $12,500 in savings from April through November. And of course, renegotiation of the airport farm lease has brought in additional revenue as well. There's been other numerous changes in efficiencies that were implemented by the apartments over the past year and going forward. And again, those were detailed in the earlier preliminary budget message. Cities enterprise funds do have rate increases that are budgeted for the sewer collection and drainage and for the golf course. Sewer collection and drainage fees were previously established as part of the financing of the water pollution control plant improvement project. Golf fees will increase for the 2012 season, in part due to the upcoming capital improvements, the fairway irrigation system in particular. Fees are not budgeted to increase in other funds, including transfer station landfill refuse collection, transfer ambulance, airport, and parking. The enterprise funds, excuse me, fund balance. Related, the enterprise fund, the landfill enterprise fund does reflect a continuation of the plan to reduce or eliminate the accumulated deficit over the next four to five years in preparation for the next, for the construction of the next cell. In addition to the operating budget, the 2012-2013 budget includes just over $7.1 million in capital projects, including the list, the six items on the page, street-related projects, sewer, lab expansion of the water pollution control plant, golf, trail design services, and airport improvements. Why am I on that? Steve, could you take two seconds and address the airport 9010 versus 90, or 85, excuse me, 955 funding?
Thank you, Greg. We were notified by the FAA that with the recent passage of the new FAA funding bill, they have, they have increased the city share for projects from 5% to 10%. So instead of having 95% participation by the federal government, it will drop to 90%. Still a pretty good return on the dollar. That's about where it was in 2004, and then it went to 95%, but it is 90% now, and that affects our upcoming projects this spring. So we have to notify the FAA this month if the council decides they do not want to participate at that level, and the funding will be returned to the federal government and not used for those projects. But we budgeted 5.5%, so it's important that council understand that we would be going to the 10%. I think the net effect of that to the city projects, a couple hundred thousand dollars for the projects, is about another $14,000 to $15,000. Questions on that I'll try to answer, but that's where we are.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. 1213 budget overall financial plan for both operating, it is a financial, overall financial plan for both operating and capital expenditures for the city. The budget continues to provide for the numerous services provided to residents of the community, maintains a good general fund balance, and provides for infrastructure improvements to continue in the city. Proposed budget, including the proposed tax rate, positions the city for future year budgets, including the possible impacts of legislative changes that may come after the budget's adopted. The improved position includes a general fund balance of 15.5% of general fund expenditures, allows for funding of capital expenditures from available balances in lieu of bond issues, additional bond issues, which results in a savings of the interest cost, maintains a steady tax levy rate, avoiding significant year-to-year decreases or increases in the rate, and does maintain a tax rate which may become a base rate if future tax rates or tax revenues are limited by legislative changes being considered. I don't know if you recall, but one of, a piece of the property tax legislation included establishing base rates for next fiscal year, starting next fiscal year, so your tax rate, your current tax rate would become your new base, and you would grow from that, whatever annual percentage they set or CPI they set, going forward from that new base rate. So anything we do this year to affect that, to affect the tax rate, has the potential to affect us going forward as a new base rate. That's a quick summary of the budget. We are happy to answer questions related to the budget. Back to you, mayor.
Counsel, discussion.
Your comment, your comment about the potential legislation.
Yes.
So the, if, the higher budget that we had, not that we want to rack the budget up and have it extremely high, but if we use a higher number, your base would be higher, and so your percentages would be from that higher number.
Correct.
Okay.
But again, it's potential legislation. What we're trying to do with this budget is position ourselves for the unknown. We, you know, there's several issues, and I've highlighted those, the property tax, TIF, ATEs, a potential new base rate. And typically, the legislature finishes after, cities are required to set their budgets by March 15th, so we face the unknown going forward. And we think the budget positions us to address those unknowns.
In worst-case scenario, we would be coming back probably to amend our budget to try to figure out where we're going to come up with money to fund.
Correct.
Items, if, the worst-case scenario.
And I thought it was kind of interesting, looking at the, you know, the tax rate history, that our current tax rate is roughly the same as we had back in 2005, 2006.
You mean the levy rate?
Levy rate, excuse me, I, yes. It's slightly higher than 2005, 2006. You know, given all of the increases we've had since then, you know, I think we've done a pretty good job at keeping the tax rate the past three years with, including the proposed tax rate at a level rate.
The property tax, the commercial rollback wouldn't, wouldn't impact us for another year, is that correct? At the local level?
It will be next year.
Next year.
Fiscal year, yeah.
But the...
Next.
1213.
1213 fiscal year. It's my understanding. Could be the year after. It ultimately depends on the legislation. That legislation is not, is exempt from the funnel. From the funnels that are going on right now, last Friday and this coming Friday.
Just, this will be my last plea, probably. I've been talking about it during the budget session here about, I will not vote on the budget if we have any increase in property taxes. However, we didn't set that, the increase of property taxes as a city, but due to the rollback from 48 to 50, I think that's increased, what, $35 per 100,000?
Yes. That's... On a homeowner of a $100,000 home, it'd be a $35 annual increase.
So I, what I would like to do tonight here, just throw a couple ideas on the table here for the rest of the council, so hopefully we can eliminate that increase for property taxes. And the first thing that comes to mind here, if we can decrease the utility franchise fee from 2% to 1%, there is a potential of saving of almost $114,000. Second, if we can go for the debt service fund balance, reduce it by 50%, that's additional $40,000, and the employee benefit fund, another $50,000 there. So that will get us close to probably the 300 and some thousand dollars we're looking at to offset the increase in property taxes. So we can probably taking the remainder of that from the general fund. And that will put the general fund from 15.3% down to about 14.3. So this is my plea here to the rest of the council to eliminate the increase in property taxes for all the citizens in Muscatine, so. And I will entertain any other ideas that you can come up with here from any different fund that you would like to do here to eliminate that increase. But I will put that on the table here, and if Nancy have any different ideas with her background and her experience with all these budgets over the years, plus Greg, to eliminate that, that would be good. However, we still waiting on what the state going to do here. It's unknown, unfortunately, to this. And unfortunately, we have to certify our budget prior to the session is over in Des Moines. So probably we have to come back here and revisit our budget, depending on what kind of rules and regulation and new laws they put in front of us, so. But these some ideas I am throwing out there here. Like I said before, I ran on platform here to not raise any property taxes, and I'm going to be good for my word here, I'm going to stick to that, so. And these some ideas I will share with everybody, so.
Mayor, I had a couple. I had a few discussions with Nancy, and she's copied Greg on some communications. And addressing Osama's comment about the franchise fee, the utilities franchise fee, I think, kind of of the opinion that that might get, not be noticed by all the people that are paying, presently paying that fee, and it wouldn't do anything directly for the property taxes. Citizens would have to, in their head, kind of net those things out, so. That's, that's one option that I'm not crazy about, but I would like, Nancy's even this evening said that if this discussion kind of heads this way of how we could refine this a little bit, that she's got some options. So I'm being interested in hearing those. One other comment is, I notice in our budget materials that we've been going through for a long time, that Greg and Nancy were able to reduce from the original requests about a half million dollars. So I think, I think that needs to be brought out, that, you know, that was a good job in trying to, trying to get where we want to get. So if we can get a little farther, that's great. Kind of putting you on the spot, I guess, Nancy.
While Nancy's handing that out, just a couple of quick comments, and Councilmember Shaw, I mentioned it, it's an unknown what the state's going to do at this point in time. Thus, you know, part of the reason to have that fund balance available should something change going forward. And just a reminder, our current levy is artificially low, for a couple of reasons that I mentioned in the handout. In an attempt to keep the levy level going forward next fiscal year, it's artificially low already, and that concerns me, should we be required to establish a new base rate going forward if we reduce it any further. We're already artificially low.
I'm not sure I would agree with the comment that we're artificially low. I think it just means we weren't prepared to cut enough spending to keep it without having to make the other moves.
We actually added personnel as part of the budget.
I was going to say, we didn't do any cutting. Everything, every time we turned around, we were adding money into the budget, and initially you were $347,000 plus or minus dollars. And we were supposed, I thought, we were going to take a look at taking that down so the tax levy would be, or the amount people pay in taxes would be reduced, and actually reducing the levy. And all we did was, is, was actually raise, raise it. We kept, we kept adding things, and rightfully so. And just another, one other comment, and then I'm going to shut up. But we spent almost 40 hours or so down in budget session. We could put together a budget that I thought, at that point when we left, was satisfactory to all of council. And I really have a problem when we get to this...
I disagree, Phil.
I really have a problem when we get to this time of setting a public hearing and the final, final hour, and now we want to whack, 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 when we didn't do it during the timeframe that we had in our sessions.
Well, I, a couple of things, Phil. I disagree with you, first of all. I was consistent during the whole budget with that, that's one. Two, I mean, I don't think, as a council, we did any hard decision going through the budget, myself. And here's what the hard decision is going to do, and you can tell me, what are you going to do if the state decided to take the $460,000 from the ATEs coming to us that it's included in the budget? What are you going to cut, $460,000?
Well, by, by taking an additional dollars, $340,000 out of it, you're just going to make it even worse. We're not going to have, we're not going to have a fund balance to meet needs like that.
I think we can afford, I understand your pain here, Osama, but I don't know that we can afford to take that risk, given the unknowns.
I understand. But still, I mean, you're going to have really hard decisions to make, even if you leave it the way it is. You're going to make a decision to eliminate $460,000.
The other concern I have is that we've projected that as soon as 2017, we're going to have to borrow a lot of money for the sewer separation project. And we need to do everything we can to drive our credit rating as high as we can, because that's a long-term cost we're going to bear. We need that 20% fund balance. How we get there has got to be a combination of the tax levy and cuts in spending. But we, we can't, we can't afford not to be at 20% when it comes time to borrow.
Counsel, let's give Nancy an opportunity to explain her handout.
I'll just kind of explain what I put together, actually, this afternoon, in case it just...
a discussion came up. Scott did call me, or I think it was after the last council meeting, asked me about the utility franchise fee, and originally it sounded like that would be a way to assist costs with taxpayers. But as he mentioned, it does seem like that their tax bill would still go up, and the utility franchise fee might not be noticed as a decrease. So, I think both he and I are lukewarm about that as a way to control, or to lower the property taxes. And I, I liked your idea about the debt service fund balance. However, the, our new financial advisor pointed out that we don't have cash balance, we have a fund balance, June thirtieth, of that amount, but due to the lag of the collection of property taxes, it's not available to actually budget for. I've tried, and she took it out, actually. So, what, what we're down to is if council does want to consider reducing the property tax, I, we did lay out a, a number of scenarios. If the, the top line is what it currently is, fifteen point seven seven, which leaves us the fund balance of two million six hundred and fifty-five, which is fifteen point four five. If we wanted to have the goal of maintaining a fifteen percent fund balance, that would be approximately a ten cent decrease in the property tax rate to fifteen sixty-seven, which would leave two million five hundred and seventy-seven thousand, which would be fifteen percent of fund balance. So, I've laid out several more modest reductions. The last one would actually be if we, if the goal for everyone was to have a zero property tax dollar increase. And that would be a significant decrease in the tax rate to fifteen thirty-three, would leave two point three million, and would, the fund balance percentage would be thirteen point five. That, as been, has, as has been pointed out, doesn't leave us a lot of flexibility if the ATE money goes away. But there are ranges of scenarios in between, if council was interested in more of a modest decrease in the tax rate.
Mayor. Any questions for Nancy?
Could you tell us, okay, the funnel week is over with it, is that correct? If, if the bill didn't make it through last Friday, it got dumped?
I believe there's, there's two. I believe there's two. Isn't there one last Friday and one this Friday?
There's two.
But then, but appropriate, there's three or four different types of bills that are exempt from the funnel process, and appropriations is one, is actually, I think it was in the paper.
Ways and Means.
Ways and Means.
To the House President, to the House Chairman.
Right. And so, for example, property tax could be voted, could be brought forward at, at the last hour.
Tell me what you believe might happen with the ATE.
It doesn't have crystal ball.
I wish, I wish, I wish I did. You know, in my update that I sent out on, on Fridays, Nancy sent me some information this afternoon from, from our.
Collection Agency.
Collection Agency, and some of the stats that they've noticed, and the ATE cameras are working, they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. They've noticed in our, Muscatine's trend is, is a little bit different than most communities. Their repeat offenders are from outside of the community, not Muscatine residents. So, that, that tells us that it's working, they're, they know they're there, and it's working at those intersections. We've had a thirty percent reduction in accidents at those intersections, it's working. Does it perhaps need to be more uniform across the state? I think you can make a pretty good argument that, that, that may be a good way to go, make the fines more uniform across the state. That'd be my best guess, if something was going to happen. Although, you know, I believe there was a survey done of Iowa residents a couple weeks, week or two ago. Correct me if I'm wrong, may, may not know, but that a majority of Iowa residents felt that the ATE, ATE cameras should be kept. And that was distributed to the legislature. But best guess, I, I don't know, I would, my best guess is that something could happen with a more uniform fine structure.
I think they might have a violation cap reform put on it, I think. I mean, here is, I think, and see it wraps at seventy-five dollars, you go to Sioux City, it's a hundred and ninety-five dollars violation, I think.
Not anymore.
Not anymore?
They, they rolled it back, so.
They did?
It's like ninety-five bucks now.
Is it? Yeah. It was one ninety-five.
Oh, yeah. It was a hundred and eighty-five or something.
Something like that.
There's a lot of folks with pretty strong feelings on ATE cameras, one way or the others, and I've seen too many things happen at the last minute with the legislature to, to really be able to predict what's going to happen.
Put the gap, so I.
Thank you, Nancy. Counsel, any more discussion?
I mean, I'm willing, if you don't want to go to zero on this, if we can just take, cut a little bit of that, even the ten cents, I would be happy with that. Anything helps.
Mayor, I have a couple of comments, actually. First off, in regard to the franchise fee, while I know there's a comment that, well, they wouldn't really feel that too much, we implemented that two years ago, and I didn't like it at the time, but the argument for that was that we were in a bad place. This was a chance for us to temporarily raise some revenues, and even with those revenues, I think we budgeted a fund balance of ten point four percent, if my memory serves me Here we are now talking about a fifteen point five percent fund balance. Our neighbors have gone to one percent on the franchise fee while we sit at two percent. And the discussion here doesn't sound like it's very temporary. So, I would certainly support any notion that we would cut the franchise fee to one percent, because it would put us in line with our neighbors, and we are not in a position where we are now hurting for funds. We can always change that year to year. Next year, if, if the state decides, oh, we're gonna, we're gonna take your ATE money away, well, one way you can find some of those revenues is you can talk about raising the franchise fee at that time, if you're in a hurtful position, but we are not right now. So, I would certainly be in support of cutting the franchise fee to one percent.
One comment, yeah, one comment on Phil's. At the last session, Phil, I, I actually asked Greg if we wanted to make future refinements, how would we go about it, so it was brought up.
Oh, I know.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very aware of that.
And, and again, I think that we've done a good job to get where we're at. But I, but I also agree with Osama, I'd like to see it just a little bit better here, if we can do it quickly, without a lot of, with some kind of consensus. Well, we'll need at least four consensus, but.
Yes, just a reminder, the budget requires four positive votes, even if, well, everybody's here, so it doesn't matter.
And also thanks to Nancy for giving us some options here at the last minute.
One more time, counsel, discussion? Okay, this will be a roll call vote, and we'll start with Tom.
Aye.
Jeanette.
Aye.
Bob.
Nay.
Osama.
Nay.
Pat.
What was yours? Did you say, Scott?
Nay, sorry.
Phil.
Aye.
And Mark.
Nay.
That is four.
Or three.
Motion fails.
So, the motion fails? Four to three.
I'd like to suggest that we have a, set a, another meeting for next week to review the budget and go over these concerns, rather than doing it at this hour.
Can I put the motion on the table here and see if we can put that on?
Sure.
Is that legal?
And your motion is, Osama.
Take the tax rate to fifteen point six seven two zero nine thirty thousand, and reduce the utility franchise fee from two percent to one percent.
Fran, can you read that back, please?
Motion was to reduce the tax features fifteen point six seven two zero nine per one thousand, and reduce the franchise fee from two percent to one percent. Is that right?
That's correct.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second, Your Honor.
Second, Bob. This is a roll call vote, uh, our discussion, I'm sorry. No discussion?
Obviously, I'm happy with it. Obviously, I'm happy with it, again, I'm, I'd like to see that franchise fee reduced, so.
Okay, and a roll call vote, we'll start with Osama.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Jeanette.
Nay.
Tom.
Nay.
Uh, Mark.
Aye.
Phil.
Nay.
Aye.
What's the score, Fran?
It's, it's reversed. It is now four a's and three nays.
I believe that motion carries then? And Greg, you'll, you'll schedule a date for us to get together, correct?
It'll be necessary now, Mayor.
Oh.
It's unnecessary. Just to prove the budget.
We will move on. Item D. During the recent budget discussions, City Council discussed the issuance of four million five hundred thousand dollars in general obligation bonds dated June first, two thousand and twelve. Of this total amount, up to four million fifty thousand is for projects considered to be essential corporate purposes, and up to four hundred and fifty thousand is for the South End Fire Station, which is considered a general corporate purpose. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Well, and a second?
Second, Your Honor.
Second, Osama, discussion? No discussion, roll call vote, Phil.
Aye.
Pat. Osama.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Jeanette.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
And Mark.
Aye.
Motion carries seven, zero. Item E. Presented for City Council's consideration is a resolution accepting a capital funding grant for fiscal year two thousand and twelve and approving the Muscatine Municipal Agency five-year plan for two thousand and twelve through two thousand and sixteen. On February thirteenth, two thousand and twelve, the MMHA was granted a hundred and fifty-one thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars for its capital fund program for fiscal year two thousand and twelve. The grant is a reduction of nineteen thousand one hundred and forty-three dollars from the original projection of a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. Modifications and reductions to the fiscal year two thousand and twelve original work statement will allow the MMHA to utilize the total grant amount of fifteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted? So moved.
Second.
Mark, can? And a second. Tom, discussion? Roll call vote, folks, starting with Mark.
Aye.
Phil.
Aye.
Pat.
Aye.
Osama.
Aye.
And Bob.
Aye.
Jeanette.
Aye.
And Tom.
Aye.
Motion carries seven, zero. Item F. Presented for City Council's consideration is a resolution awarding the bid for the Cedar Street clearing project in preparation for the two thousand and twelve utility work. Tree clearing is necessary at various locations along Cedar Street from Param to Hauser. Clearing will allow utility companies to relocate existing lines where they will not conflict with future grading, paving, and storm sewer work. Four bids were submitted for this project with a low bid from Salzberger Escavating in the amount of twenty-four thousand five hundred and ninety-six dollars and twenty-five cents. The engineer's estimate was thirty thousand two hundred and sixty dollars. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
Over to approval.
Uh, we'll give that one to Jeanette, and Scott, you want the second? Okay. Any discussion? Roll call vote, starting with Jeanette.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Phil.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Osama.
Aye.
And Bob.
Aye.
Motion carries seven, zero. Item G. Presented for City Council's consideration is a resolution setting a public hearing on the West Hill area sanitation and storm sewer separation project, phase one. The city is under a federal EPA consent order to separate all storm and sanitary sewers by two thousand and twenty-four. Over the past twenty years, the city has been separating storm and sanitary sewers in the community through the use of the local option sales tax. In order to complete the process, a, a very large and significant separation project of the city's West Hill area must now be undertaken. The project will be done in phases, with phase one beginning this spring. Prior to any formal action by the City Council, a public hearing is required. This public hearing will take place on Thursday, March fifteenth, two thousand and twelve at seven P.M. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Mark.
Second, Your Honor.
Second. Scott, discussion? A roll call vote, beginning with Mark.
Aye.
Phil.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Osama.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Jeanette.
Aye.
And Tom.
Aye.
Motion carries seven, zero. Item H. Presented for City Council's consideration is a resolution approving a concession agreement for Kent Stein Park, the soccer complex, and the aquatic center. The city is proposing to enter into a two-year concession lease agreement with Happy Joe's Pizza for the above-mentioned sites. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Bob, need a second?
Second.
Second, Mark, discussion? This is a voice vote, all those in favor say, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries seven, zero. Item I. Presented for City Council's consideration is a request to approve, to approve the low bid for the dismantling and rebuilding of a storage building at the Water Pollution Control Plant. Bids were received for the dismantling of a steel building located at the former National Guard Armory Site at fourteen twenty-one Park Avenue, and reconstructing it on a new foundation, including a floor and driveway at the Water Pollution Control Plant. The low bid, the low bid from, is from Quality Construction Services in the amount of a hundred and thirty-six thousand seven hundred and three dollars. There is a two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar budgeted, was budgeted, for the construction of the new storage building at the WPCP. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
Osama, General.
Osama, need a second?
Second, Your Honor.
Second, Bob, discussion?
Your Honor, I, just to note, this is, this is subject to council acceptance of the quitclaim deed, which Executive Council is supposed to be acting on Monday.
This is a voice vote, all those in favor.
I did have one question for Roger, I guess. The, this bid was real close to another one. Is, is it because this contractor is the representative for this building that, was that part of your decision?
Without coming up there, yes. I feel very comfortable, because he's a, he's a star building, that's, he's a star building.
Any more discussion, counsel? Voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries seven, zero. Item J. Presented for City Council's consideration is a request to approve Spring Cleanup Week for April twenty-third through the twenty-seventh, two thousand and twelve. April is Keep America Beautiful Month, and April twenty-second, two thousand and twelve is Earth Day. Spring Cleanup Week is established to coincide with these two events. The purpose of this activity is to encourage residents to clean up their homes, yards, and neighborhoods for the upcoming spring and summer season. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Mark, need a second?
Second, Your Honor.
Second. Phil, discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Motion carries seven, zero. Item K. Presented for City Council's consideration is a request to enter into a grant agreement for storm warning, storm warning siren upgrades. The city has been awarded federal assistance under the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program for the purchase and installation of twenty-three. for storm warning, storm warning siren upgrades. The city has been awarded federal assistance under the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program for the purchase and installation of 23 outdoor warning siren radio controllers. The upgrading of the sirens would eliminate the telephone line notification and would change it to radio-controlled activation, which would have an, an annual cost savings of approximately $13,200. The total grant award is $59,527, with the city's match being 15% or $8,930. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Scott, need a second?
Jeanette.
Jeanette.
Second, Jeanette, discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Motion carries seven zero. Item L. Presented for City Council's consideration is a request for approval to enter into a right-of-way services agreement for the Colorado Street Improvement Project. The city is examining optional alignments for this project. In order to complete the project, the city will need to acquire a portion of two properties in fee title. It is staff's recommendation that City Council approve the right-of-way services agreement with A&R Land Services Incorporated for the title acquisition of these properties. The estimated cost of $16,020 will be, will be from funds allocated for this project. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Phil, and a second?
Second.
Second, Mark, discussion, counsel? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay? Motion carries seven zero. Item M. Discussion on Proposed Amendment of Title II Boards and Commissions, Chapter 19, Board of Water, Electric, and Communication Trustees. At this time, discussion will take place on the proposed amendment.
Could we have a quick review of what exactly, why exactly we're amending this particular ordinance?
MPW has requested that the City Council consider, um, an amendment to the ordinance to reflect their service area in addition to their service area, their water and electric service area, um, rather than simply the city, uh, the city limits, um, for membership on the board. There was a, did a little research with City Attorney, there, there was, there's an older Attorney General's opinion indicating that it had to be, you had to be a resident of the city in order to be on the board. Apparently, that's, uh, code has changed, uh, that would allow for, uh, a board member to be, uh, within the service area rather than strictly the city limits. Um, Councilmember Shahidi called and asked that I, um, take a look at this, and I'll turn it over to Councilmember.
I think what, that gives the mayor here a bigger pool to choose from for, uh, people who serve on the Board of Trustee at MPNW. If you are paying for the service at MPNW, you should be included in that, not only if you are resident of the city. I think it's, uh, it's a bigger pool to choose from, the people that they are willing to serve on and appointed to that position, so, uh, it's...
But they will have to be in the service area.
I mean, they can't be somebody else's customer.
That's, no, it's the service area of the MPNW, so.
Right, okay.
And Greg, did you, one of the emails that was floating around was you were gonna try to get some more legal updating or...
Uh, I talked to both Brandy Olson at MPW, and I talked to Matt Brick, and Matt Brick concurred that the, with Brandy's findings, that the legis, uh, the, um, new legislation allowed, uh, for the board members to be within the service area rather than strictly the city limits.
Okay.
However, I, I'd certainly suggest, because it is municipal utility, that we put some kind of limit on the number of members that are, um, outside of the city limits. Um, rather than, I mean, otherwise theoretically, you could end up with a, a member, a full board that, with, with no residents on that board. And I did talk to Sal this afternoon, and Mobiyanco, the MPW manager, he recommended that it be strictly water and electric, not communications.
What would you suggest as the, the limit? I don't know how many are on the board, I guess.
Five.
Five?
Five members.
Under the circumstances, I would be in favor of one.
Yeah.
You know, I, I think it's fair and reasonable that folks that live outside the city limits who pay for the service have representation. But the vast majority of, of the people on the service are, are residents of the city. I think a limit of one is reasonable. And are we using the Power and Water's water region, or their power region? Both.
They're recommending...
The lesser of the two. They'll follow the lines. I know, because part of, you go out in Mulberry, and where, for, unless it's changed, if I remember correctly, uh, where, uh, Fridley Theaters are, that's REC. It's inside the corporate line, but it's on REC. So, there's this weird configuration. I would hate to...
It'd be either or.
For, for me, it's, it's... Well, it has to be... Somebody outside the corporate line is paying for the, paid to bring the water out there without annex, annexation. It's like they're buying a seat on the Power and Water Board. I don't know that I'd look at it that way, but I, I think... Extremely indirect. Yeah, first of all, and, I don't want to parse words, but nobody's gonna live at the Fridley Theater. That's, that's not a residence, but, I mean, I, I do think that, that we, we need a very select set of skills for the people of this five-person board. It's a very challenging board to sit on, and, and we need to expand our field of membership to accommodate that need as well. And, and, you know, I, I'm willing to follow the lines of the greater of the two. You know, there, there was a map attached to the memorandum on the website, and frankly, I'm fine with that.
Greg, do you have an opinion?
I think that, uh, no, I don't.
Keep in mind, we are...
I've been thinking about this.
You still limit that, you still interested, though, in limiting that to one of the...
One seat.
One seat?
One seat, yes.
I agree with that.
For similar, for similar concerns that you have.
I'd, if, if, if we're gonna alter it, and with, obviously, it sounds like that's the, that's where we're heading, then I'd, I'd like to see it limited to that one. A, a seat.
We can include a, I, I talked to Sal this afternoon, and he wasn't in the office, but, uh, we could include a copy of the service area maps in the agenda packet, because obviously, this is a, what, ordinance change and require a public hearing, three readings, um, for the process.
I'd be okay with that as well. I mean, wasn't that previous legal opinion back in...
Seventy-one.
Seventy-four or something?
Seventy-one.
Seventy-one?
Seventy-one.
Do we need to put the motion on the floor here?
I don't need a motion, if, if there's any other comments, we'll put forward an ordinance.
And I would like to go on, Greg, if you don't mind, Bob, do you have an opinion?
I really think it should be limited to one, and, and they must be within the service area.
Osama?
Yeah, consensus, yeah.
Okay. Phil? And Mark?
I think Councilman Brad covered it nicely.
Okay. And moving forward, Greg, the process, again?
Three readings, public hearing, we'll put it on the agenda. It'll look similar to the sample, um, number one, uh, but there'll be a, a member limitation on there as well.
Okay. And one last time, counsel, any more comments on this discussion?
Yeah, but you may have a citizen.
Just a quick question. Do you live inside the city limits but are on REC? Do you stay far away?
Yes.
Either or?
Yes.
Because you're probably getting water.
True.
Okay, let's move along to item 14, communication from the council. We'll start with Mark.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one comment this evening. I'd just like to congratulate our high school girls bowling team on their third-place finish at state this year. They had a really young team, just one senior, and, uh, they still did very, very well, and, uh, with most of them coming back, I think we're gonna see maybe a couple more state championships in the next few years. I hope so, but they did a great job this year. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mark. Phil?
I'd just like to wish my wife a happy birthday today.
Oh, as would we all.
Yeah, so, that's all I have.
And how old is she?
I would never tell. Thirty-nine something.
Scott?
I have nothing, thank you.
Uh, Osama?
Yeah, I would like to wish Phil's wife happy birthday too, so.
Thanks, Osama.
Yeah, have fun. Bob?
Let's get over there, Phil.
Yeah.
Nothing else tonight?
Um, I get uncomfortable when things are brought up, you know, to vote on and stuff, after the budget process is over. I, I wish that, that proposal had come up while we were all there and had plenty of time to discuss it and everything, and then I would feel better voting on that. So, I would recommend that, you know, maybe next year, if you wanna vote to lower it and everything, do it before the budget process is over.
Can I answer that? Yeah, I, I, if you recall the last meeting, we did propose something on the table here, but we thought by March 1st, the state will come up with some decisions to be made, and then it will be easier for us to make that decision. And, uh, if you recall the last meeting, we did discuss that, and we put it on the table.
Okay.
So, just...
Tom?
I have nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
Okay, Greg?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor?
Fran?
Yes. I'd like to recognize my granddaughter, Alyssa out there. She got, she got to come to the city company, probably not willingly, but she got to come.
And it happened to be a longer one.
And I have no comments as well. Any other business, counsel? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Osama, meeting is adjourned.
This is for next week. This is for next week.